Special meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. Secretary, attendance? Okay, public comment? No? Okay, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
We're not gonna do pledge allegiance?
We do it at seven.
Oh, okay.
Motion.
I have a motion to enter closed session.
Second.
Okay, Mark? Okay, Jennifer, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, let's get a closed session. All right, we're gonna call the order, the open session of our Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock. Will everyone stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the Board of Education has wanted to have more direct student voice for a while. We've been researching the best way to solicit more student feedback for over a year, and having a student on the board made the most sense for us. As many of you know, we have had some important decisions on the horizon, and the student perspective is essential to making the right choices. Students are the reasons we all do what we do, and we felt we must have their perspective. Each student applicant completed an application process based on criteria the Board defined. The Board reviewed applications, consulted high school administration, and selected the top applicants for interviews. I did an initial interview with each of our seven finalists to make sure they understood the commitments and addressed any concerns they may have. Each candidate had a second interview with four Board members and a member of our central office administrative team. Since the job is more comprehensive than we anticipated, and we want students to focus first and foremost on their classwork, having co-interns seem to make the most sense in this pilot year. So now, let me introduce to you our two student interns. First, Lexi Finkelstein. I personally first remember seeing Lexi as a sophomore. She was one of the speakers to our student body during the Engage 18 work walkout. The students that day were captivated by her passion for the issue of gun violence, and it showed. Lexi had a mature presence about herself that comes across to both her fellow students and adults. Lexi is an award-winning public speaker, as evident by her 2018 novice forensic state title along with seven first places in various competitions and a fourth in the state as a junior. Lexi will be one of the captains this year of the 2020 BHHS forensics team. Lexi also volunteers at the Friendship Circle, an organization that supports children with disabilities for the last seven years. Freshman year, Lexi started a community fundraiser, Bring Your Own Dog to a Park Day, annual charity event, raising over $5,000 in helping five dogs become adopted. Inside the classroom, she is a driven student, recognized as an AP scholar, recipient of the Mount Holybrook Book Award, and National Honor Society Project Leader. Lexi has served as her class president two years in a row and continues to serve as a student representative on the Start Time Task Force in Bloomfield Youth Assistance. Lexi is extremely grateful to have been selected as one of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education's first student interns and looks forward to working with Kirsten to represent the student body and let our voices be heard. Now Kirsten McCullin. I remember Kirsten during a visit I had to the Women's Empowerment Club last year. We were discussing student perspectives on issues, and Kirsten presented to the group a very thoughtful and mature perspective of the issues, taking into account multiple perspectives. Kirsten is a senior at Bloomfield Hills High School and is a hardworking and ambitious student. Kirsten is also a state champion in forensics, AKA, public speaking debate, as well as captain of the 2020 Bloomfield Hills High School Forensics Team. Kirsten is co-president of the Black Student Alliance, the PR representative for the Women's Empowerment Club, and a 12th grade representative on student leadership. Kirsten likes to live by the personal motto of trying everything at least once because she'll never know what you might end up liking, which is how she ended up involved in martial arts. In June of 2017, Kirsten received a first degree black belt. She now works as an instructor for Core Fitness Martial Arts in her free time, and she enjoys volunteering for kids kicking cancer. Over the summer, Kirsten was a representative for the state of Michigan at the Washington Journalism and Media Conference and plans to go back next summer as part of their youth advisory board. Kirsten says she's excited about a lot of things that go on in her life, but this is the most excited she's been to be one of the Board of Education's first ever interns and working with Lexi to represent the student body. Finally, as this is an historic event for the school district, our state legislators honor both of you with signed honorarium plaques. The special tribute is signed and dedicated to the students, names for their academic excellence and public service for years to come. The proclamations have been signed by the following elected officials: Michigan House of Representative Mari Minugian, Michigan State Senator Rosemary Baer, Michigan Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer. All of them sends their regards and are proud of both of you and wish they could have been here. It is my pleasure, and I will in a second, to present these pro- print these tributes on their behalf. With that, I ask my colleagues in the Board and everyone here joining us celebrating this event with refreshments in the back. Thank you very much. Will the two of you?
I'm gonna adjourn so people can...
So we're gonna adjourn for refreshments and to celebrate our two new student interns. Okay? The Board members came back from closed session. We're right now ready to go through the matrix and tally our... tally our votes in terms of the finalist candidates.
Well, thank you for having us back tonight, too, from Ray and Associates. And I can't thank the Board enough for their time today. The community should know that many Board members have spent hours today with us reviewing candidates. We appreciate your service and also tip our hat off to your family, who obviously are sacrificing a lot of things as well, so thank you so much. So this process involves a forced choice, and the Board has in front of them a matrix with a total of nine candidates. And they're gonna be selecting candidates based upon the information that has been shared, but without revealing their names at this juncture. Those names will not go forward until, A, we have tallied the results of the matrix, and B, we've had the opportunity tonight and tomorrow to notify the candidates if they are going forward. So we pay that professional courtesy, and then it would become public sometime tomorrow, I would say after midday. So any questions at all about that part of the process? Okay, so you're not gonna write on the bottom of the matrix at all. You're only gonna be writing on the top. You wanna reference the actual candidate packet that you have, and you wanna go across that first double set of rows and determine if you're preferring candidate one over two. You can look at the bottom just to indicate what letter that candidate is.
So Mary? Mary?
Yes.
So, right now, I know you said one through two. Now, we're just on our own gonna go through?
Yes.
You're not gonna say one through three?
No, I'm gonna let you, unless you have a question, and we'll come up and help you answer it. But otherwise, just go ahead and start from the top.
Mark, always thinking outside the box.
Okay, so Mary, I got it right here.
Oh, you got the whole page?
Yeah.
Once you've been able to have the time that you need to make your decisions, just bring yours forward, and we will give each Board member a number. And we will identify you only as that, so that this is sort of an independent vote.
So just to let everyone know in our community, so we had in total 60 candidates apply from 23 different states and two different countries in terms of the application process. When everyone's completed, we'll take a five, 10-minute break, so Ray and Associates can tally up. What? We get numbers? Is it just? Do you say you're done? So, so we could, since Sithi is giving it in, so we could take a five, 10-minute break, then we'll come back, and that'll give them enough time to tally the scores.
A are all kind of clustered, and then a little bit of a drop with I, and then another drop between D and G, and then there's a tie, where there's three groups that are between 17 and 19 points total, so... Your packet indicates to you what they are if you don't...
Oh, can I get the packet back?
Oh, so sorry. Yeah, we didn't know you didn't keep them. Who else needs one?
I need one.
Paul needs his back.
I know, I know who A is. I think I'm, I think I know who E is.
Is anybody else missing one?
No.
So you're saying the top three, and then there's a natural break between I, between A and I?
Well, really, the break comes more like here, I guess.
So if we wanted to do four, your recommendation would be those top four?
These would be your top four, right here.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense. So E is, that makes sense? F, that makes sense? That's fine. A, does that make sense? I make sense? Okay, and then the debate would be D, J.
So the decision before the Board is really how many people to bring in for interviews? You know, based upon this and your study during the course of today? Watching the videos?
So looking, looking at it, and then knowing candidate D and some of the discussion we had, and then below that, I would recommend, I personally would recommend we bring in a top four. I don't know if everyone agrees?
I agree.
I agree with that.
I'd like to bring in D.
What's your thinking?
The person is local. I think that they could be a good candidate for us. As I said, I had some, I'm the only one, I think, that had personal contact with her.
You're sharing a lot, so...
Yeah.
Too much.
Too much?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So my, yeah, my recommendation, we could go around the table on the side.
Yeah, it's a number and where your comfort level is.
I'm, I'm comfortable with top four.
Okay.
If we wanna go around at this point, Mark?
Top three or four?
Correct.
Jennifer? We'll go back to Jennifer. Sithi?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think top four.
Top four.
Top four.
Top five.
Jennifer?
All right, I'm a completist, not so, I'm gonna say five, but I'm good with the middle of the board.
All right, so I think the majority says top four. So I think we'll bring in the top four.
Okay, sounds great. We'll work together to have the packets. You'll be getting information about interview questions sent out to you with some deadlines from them, so pay attention to those.
What's the most interviews you think you'd recommend doing in one day?
Three is a lot. Your brain will implode.
So I think Mark is thinking whether or not we wanna do all four of this second day.
If you could start earlier on the second day, then that would be a different story.
The only problem with starting earlier on that day is there's a, you know, parent-teacher conference.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand that totally.
Which, um, me personally, I'm, I'm fine, but I'm respectful.
You might, very...
I'm going on Tuesday, Lisa.
I'm going on Tuesday as well, so if we want to...
Oh, so there's no conflict with that?
Yeah, Wednesday would be fine if we didn't...
So if you did...
I could start earlier unless the judge in Battle Creek tells me we're coming back Wednesday, and that's, I won't know that till Tuesday night. The likelihood is very, very low. So my preference, if, it wouldn't bother everybody if we tried to do all four on Wednesday.
Or how about one and three?
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's, that ruins the purpose. I mean, I'm just saying, we want to do all four in one day or split them up two, two.
Yeah.
So I think that's the choice, so it would be all...
And then what time will we start?
You'd have to start probably 3:30, I would say.
Doesn't one and three work best for your schedule, though, Mark?
It's just a question of me getting the information on the one. I mean, if we were doing six people, then I wouldn't be saying this before. You know, if, if we could do it, I'd love to see it live.
Because you, you think you're gonna get back really late on Tuesday?
The hearing starts at 1:30. There's no way it ends before 4:30 or 5:00. So, I, I, the chance of me getting back at all for Tuesday is beyond remote.
So it would be Wednesday, starting at...
Yeah, we can reconfigure, but I would recommend starting by 3:30, so you could do one from 3:30 to 4:45, and then you could have, you know, a sort of a dinner break, and then go ahead and start with what we had proposed earlier, which was your 5:30 and go from there. Or you could have a shorter dinner break and get done a little earlier.
Yeah, we, starting early is tough for me before 5:00. I know we're doing it Monday night, and I can do that if need be, but if it's, I'd rather shorten dinner to as short as we can make it, so we can start later, you know?
You mean, so like 4:15 is every...
Well, I mean, yeah, we have to...
Like, I don't wanna do from 5:00 to 10:00.
How about a possibility of utilizing Thursday and doing maybe two and three? You know, one, one, two, or some...
No, no, it's either four, because Thursday we're deliberating.
Candidates don't know anything about Thursday, where they've set aside the other two dates as possibilities and as busy, busy people.
So Wednesday's fine, but just saying, as late as we can start would be best for me.
So what's your earliest?
I, I'll be here whatever time you say, but if it's between 3:30 and having a long dinner, or 4:15 and having a shorter dinner, I would rather have a shorter dinner.
It's not exactly, because you're still gonna have to start at least, I would say, by 3:45 or 4:00 at the latest to make that work, and...
The later, the better, so...
It's gonna take it more into the 10 o'clock than if you take that dinner break, because you're, you're adding an hour and 15 minutes into the equation.
That's the 14th, right? Uh, 13th, sorry.
That's the 13th, yeah.
So we'd have, yeah, I, I can actually do that.
So, do you wanna try for 3:45?
So we're trying to do all four on Monday?
Yeah.
If people can come at 3:45, because this, you wanna be here, obviously.
You're gonna start at 3:35?
3:45 to 5:00, then you're saying 5:15 to...
Well, you could do the dinner break, like we said before, from 5:00 to 5:30, and then you would just do what we proposed before, which is starting your, your second interview at 5:30.
5:30, and then the three, so we're just doing 3:45 to...
Five for the first one.
To five for the first one.
And then the, the other two, three, and four would be...
Which is what we were planning on if we had six.
Right.
All right, the only thing I wanna say to that is, what about community members that have set aside time to come watch and can only make one of the two nights? Does that bother anyone?
We're taping this.
I think you've had the opportunity to agree that you're going to include them in the process through the opportunity for the finalists to be part of another input group. So they've had an opportunity early on with a stakeholder, the input group, and then you're gonna give them a third opportunity when you ask them to fill out an impression sheet. And I don't, you're not gonna get that many people irregardless. I really don't believe you will, whether they're all in the evening hour or they're not. And that's gonna be hard for you. I mean, people aren't gonna stay that late either if you go to 11 o'clock. So you're gonna lose them either at the front end or at the back end.
It's important to have all the Board members present.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, so...
So when are we gonna finish on the 13?
So if you did that, you would be 3:45 to 5:00, and then your dinner break from 5:00 to 5:30. And then your second interview would be 5:30 to 6:45. And then 7:00 to 8:15. And then 8:30 to 9:45.
We'll deliberate the next night, so we're guaranteed to get out of here at 9:45. Which is not horrible, 9:45, not far.
Okay, so we're gonna start at 3:45.
Yep. Is everybody amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That'll be the process, okay?
We, we give courtesy to people who do have to come from the furthest distance and let them slot themselves in first.
Okay.
Because they have travel arrangements.
Okay.
And what was the final determination in terms of whether they're paying their own bill or whether we're compensating them?
Our understanding was that they would turn in their receipts, and the Board would pay for that.
Very good.
Yeah, that's what we agreed to.
That's what you had agreed to.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer?
Mary, when are you going to inform the nine persons of the decisions made tonight?
Well, we'll inform these four for sure tonight and tomorrow morning, and then we'll go forward with notifying the other with input after that.
It's, it's 10 o'clock already, so...
Yeah, it may not be tonight.
So a question I would ask, potentially, we could find, like, we have one candidate who would like coming long distance. Only one of them's really long distance.
Could you speak with a mic?
So let's say if you had a candidate...
So if we had a candidate who was coming from a long distance, and that person decided to withdraw, maybe for whatever, traveling, whatever, would the Board want to consider the next candidate down?
Well, I think that's a good thing to propose. The likelihood of them withdrawing when they know that this is coming and that they had the opportunity, I think, is pretty, you know, low, but I can't speak for what, how they're gonna react.
I've seen it happen.
Yeah, I mean, it, it definitely could happen. And if you did that, then you would have to have an agreement now that you were still wanting to not narrow it down too far, and you would bring in then candidate D.
Because it's low probability.
Because you did have some interest in candidate D being included anyway. So are people amenable to that?
I, I don't, if it's, if someone drops out and we're down to three?
I think this person might interview.
Yeah, no, my, yeah, my point is, if someone drops out and we're down to three, I don't wanna bring a candidate that we originally didn't plan on interviewing.
Okay.
I think we just interview three.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm making sure, so the 13th is the day we're gonna be coming at 3:45.
That's correct. All right.
Thank you, everybody, for accommodating me on that. But my schedule's beyond my control.
Do we have a meeting this Wednesday?
And it's a critical meeting you need to put on your calendars also, is the very next day?